We're simply, probably, thank you to this beautiful, all the things you've invited for us. So we just ask for guidance tonight if we go forth in this town Bronson meeting. And our business, and we ask you just everything we do will be pleasing in your eyes.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united now, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I think you're Matt coming up at night, didn't it? To our, yeah, our board. Town council meeting. And then we can start off with a road call. Curtis is here. Our new interim car chief, Mr. Jeff, is here. Amy is here. Sue is here. Tyler is here. Franklin is on the computer zoom. I'm here. Mr. Virginia's here. Ms. Harris here. And Mr. Warren.
Yes, sir.
All the way to the county. All right. If we had a chance to look at the agenda, if so, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Prop. 2nd, all in his favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same motion carries. Next up is approval of the minutes from the February 20th Town Council meeting.
Move approval of the minutes from February 20th Town Council meeting.
My second. Again, Prop. 2nd, all in his favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same motion carries. Focus participation. If you wish to speak with the council, we would ask that you fill out a speaker's request form and submit it to the deputy clerk. There's none. When you approach the podium, we ask that you speak clearly and state your full name and address for the record. Conferences will be limited to a maximum of three minutes per person. And the speaker's request form is when he has those or if you got it right. Okay. All right, tonight we're going to start off with Adam. Adam, then we'll get you in now.
Thank you, appreciate it. My name's Adam Alexander, I'm a Bronson resident. I think you have the information for the reason why. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. And the reason why I'm here is I have a position with Meridian Healthcare. Meridian Healthcare, not my, my actual position is community health services. I handle three counties, Gilfrid County, Leavy County, and all the towns in between, all the small towns. And I give the work from Inpatia all the way down to, yeah, Leavy County. And what I'm working on through a grant of the hurricane relief, which was last year's Hurricane, a day we came through. Of course, we all suffered from that, some people more than others. And what happened was in October, FEMA came in and then they left at the end of October. So when they left, there was still a lot of work to be done because there were more people affected and still hadn't got back on their feet. In conjunction with Meridian Healthcare, what they did, FEMA partnered with Meridian, and they got a grant. So the grant now is trying to cover and put together those people who are still suffering post-hurricane resources, mental health issues, this sort of thing, whether it be food, lodging, power, electricity. We have many different departments inside Meridian. And if we don't have a resource, which it comes to me, we'll go outside of Meridian and satisfy that need we possibly can. There's a lot of folks out there. And they still got damage to their house, a lot of them came back after they had left and the white clinic, it's one of these things, to try to rebuild in some cases. They just don't have the money. So that's where we come in. So the small towns that I go to, I get in front of every town council about few folks are a source for the kind of big water builders sort of thing. And of course, your audience and the folks around the community all the time, we need to identify these people. And we need to let them know what Meridian's role is in this. And of course, this relief effort is, uh, is no cost to the victims of a hurricane. So we're like I said, working through the grant. And like I said, they say we have many different departments, everything from veteran support all the way down to what, whether we have abuse, just use with the outreach programs that we have, that's different departments. So what we want to identify specifically are the hurricane victims.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions?
I'd ask a couple of questions. So this is somebody who has to have had some sort of a loss as a direct result of hurricane failure?
Yes.
Okay.
In the three county area.
In those three counties, okay. And, um...
Dixon County, Gilfrid County, Leavy County.
So I'm guessing you're probably going to Cedar Key and going directly to Cedar Key to talk to them because they were the ones who probably weren't affected by it.
They were affected real badly. Probably where it came to, uh, where it came at was around Parrot, Parrot's outside or so. The two beaches suffered tremendous amount of damage. And somebody hasn't been up there or, you know, it's a distance out there, but these people have, uh, the houses absolutely blown and come out of something blown away. And a lot of the older structures, when they got hit real hard, I mean, they're, they got devastated. So yes, we're going to try to focus on the three county area. Uh, but places like Trenton was so far inland, they weren't affected that bad. Wilson wasn't affected that bad, but I'm still, I know that there's probably still people out here that have issues. And we're not going to turn anybody down, we're not going to talk about it. I have the five crisis counselors that report to me. And what's happens when somebody gets identified, they turn that over to, uh, to me in the group. And then what we do, we assign that to one of the crisis counselors. So there may be a lot of issues. And like I mentioned, it's a, uh, a lot of this for us, of course, anxiety comes when you're trying to build background. So when you get into, it's maybe not the material things, but it may be an issue of substance abuse, that sort of thing. So we're not going to discount anything.
I had talked to Melody the last time I saw her at one of my meetings about putting something in our next quarterly newsletter.
Yes.
She said she was going to try and get it before whoever is agreeing that a policy that kind of thing. So if you guys can coordinate our next newsletter, should be going out that, agree what you want in?
Yes, this is what we want.
Okay. Shouldn't go out probably next month, so.
Right.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Have you been in contact with, like, the school district?
We have special crisis counselor contacts on the schools. Green is pink. And if you haven't got a school, I'd be glad to leave your card, that way you can call her directly.
This is just the first we're hearing, and I figured if it went out to the school, they would have sent something out or something that we could give to, um, like our guidance counselors so they can identify these, because they're the ones who most of the time end up con, with some kind of contact. And I know like at the school board, we have a homeless liaison, a person who goes out and then, um, Ms. Shawn Myers, like our social worker, she does with a lot of families that may be going through these issues, so this, I was just wondering.
Yeah, she handles schools, in fact, she was, uh, here today working around the food banks. So the food banks are one of the places we target, we do it to, the simple reason we get a lot of conversation going. And schools, it's easy to recognize because we have a student coming to school, that may be not so easy sometimes, who's wearing the same clothes, you know, hygiene, behavioral issues, that sort of thing. And, uh, you know, you have counselors, that's what they do is they target the particular students of care. And they may be come up with a hurricane, maybe post, post-stuff, they can't afford the food, well, who knows? And that's one of the things that, that we address. Our, our crisis counselor is very thorough.
And I appreciate it.
Sure.
You were truly blessed here in Bronson. It was very minimal damage, and, uh, I'm here where you're talking about the insurance issue.
And they'll come back, it looks like a long time to come back. A lot of these people are part-time people. The ones who got the summer home today or the winter home, the weather, the kids. And that's, people got insurance and people got healthcare, those by people's not going to be my clients. Clients can be the people who suffer minimum income, that sort of thing, or their age or whatever is going to be critical for them before we go on that. But thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Again, if anybody knows any ideas that you can pass on to this, let us know, okay? Ms. Manny, come to us.
I know most of you know me, but my name is Andy Waters, my address is 651 Northwest Highway 27 in Chequon. And I feel that it is proper and respectful to the board, uh, the council, to introduce myself as the candidate for the Leavy County Circuit Board and comptroller. I'm going to stick to my script because I have 12 years of stuff up here and I will end up down a rattle hole. So I'm going to stick to this. Um, if you have any questions, um, go through the song. Um, so I'm here to tell you about my credentials and my experience. I'm the only candidate that can offer this to the citizens of Leavy County. Working at the courthouse for the past 12 years has absolutely prepared me to be your next clerk. Mr. Schiff allowed me to move around his office. I've worked in every one of his offices, in clerk's office, over the past 12 years in some way or another. I've also worked for the county judge's office that has a whole other level of knowledge that no one has because I'm the only one in this race that has held this position. And is very important, very crucial, court administration. If you don't have a good connection with them, they can make your life hard sometimes. Um, and I have a very good connection with them, Chief Judge Howard. We, uh, we got pretty close, um, when Judge Brown retired and, um, you know, we got, we got close on. Growing up, I always wanted to help people. Um, I always shared whatever I had. I've always been passionate about anything I go for. If I'm going for something, I give it my all, and this is no difference. Responsibilities of the clerk, if you, uh, you may know or you may not know, is the clerk to the circuit court, clerk to the county court, and clerk to the board. There's a whole bunch of stuff that falls under that. So we'll be here all day if I remember long about that. I served many roles within a clerk's office, and I will touch on that. The titles that I actually held was felony clerk, county ordinance clerk, recording clerk, public records clerk, tax deed clerk, value adjustment board clerk. I worked in the finance office at times and also did board management, Shandel wasn't able to do that. So I always attended the board meetings in somewhere or another, most of the time I attended them, um, so I have knowledge in that as well. Um, the, the clerk's office has, I'll, I'll try to break it down for you a little bit. There's a civil department, there's a criminal department, there's jury management, there's public records, official records, um, finance, board finance, clerk finance, um, and I was able to touch in all of those. Mr. Schiff allowed me to. That was always the plan for you to go around and, um, the entire realm because it's important. If you don't know, if you make a decision on this, it's going to have a domino effect to this, and it can, it won't be good in some instances. Like I said, I was offered the position of a judicial assistant to the Leavy County judge. Great about it, and it was decided that it was by far the best decision I had made this far because of me gaining, um, that extra knowledge. I'm a professional liaison with the elected officials' offices, many attorneys, all of this county employees, court personnel, and many more. I gained these connections throughout my career at the Leavy County Courthouse. It is imperative that you have a good working relationship with all constitutional officers, county commissioners, sometimes city council, depending on what the issue is. Just some brief examples of that, like property appraiser, some people don't realize the connection there, when you go to the court of D, it's going to the property appraiser. And if there's a snag along the way, that it would have a problem, the property appraiser would have a problem. Tax collector, traffic court, somebody's license gets abused, that goes to the tax collector that spends their license. Supervisor of elections, uh, the clerk's office may advise a supervisor of elections when somebody is a convicted felon, if they're a duty duty looking for it. Important because it protects their rights. Um, the sheriff's office, big one, first appearance, all court cases, um, court, transportation, bonds, so many things, the sheriff's office, you've got to have a good relationship with them and the employees there. Police pinder's office, that's a big one, state attorney's office, veteran's office, same thing. If you're a veteran, um, your documents get forwarded in the clerk's office for state P V. Um, county probation, state probation, you've got to have a good relationship with them because they have paperwork they have to do as well. And if you don't relay the message properly, it affects the judicial system. I know most of them on a first name basis, so if something ever come up, I would never get a call. Um, I, I've just always had that working relationship with them. A lot of you probably remember me working at Perkins State Bank for many years. I can remember, we're starting there when I was still in high school, and I looked across the parking lot and say, oh, I want to work over there, and I pointed to courthouse. And here I am. I've been at the courthouse for 12 years, you don't think I'm leaving. Um, in closing, I will tell you that, um, a brief synopsis. I worked the front lines and greeted everyone at the counter with a smile and anxious to see how to help them. I've dreamed of putting this position of clerk of the circuit court for Leavy County for a very long time. I can remember looking, well, I just did that, looking across parking lots. Um, I have walked the halls of the courthouse since that many days in the classrooms, watching and learning from other people throughout the years. The do's and the don'ts. Um, I'm just a very observant person, so that has definitely benefited me because I held it up here. I never would've talked about it because I don't, I'm just not that kind of person. But I, I held on to it. Um, to me, this is not just a professional goal to achieve. This is, um, this is not about the job title. This is truly about the job, I want the job. I always have, and I will stand by that until the end. I will use my attention to detail, organizational skills, vision, and experience to empower Leavy County Clerk of Circuit Court and Comptroller Office to do whatever is best for Leavy County and its citizens. This is a statute-driven position, and I have been reading and interpreting statutes for 12 years, so I, I know how to do that very well. I've attended many clerk conferences, judicial conferences, and that has helped me open up my eyes and mind into other ways of doing things. Change isn't always the best, but sometimes it's needed. Um, so I'm definitely not opposed to that if there's a better way of doing something for everyone, the employees and citizens. I'm young enough to give decades of dedication to Leavy County, but mature enough to ensure the duties, uh, for the job that is required, um, in my office. And I'm excited to enter the next chapter, and I hope to continue to use my knowledge and experience at the Leavy County Courthouse to maintain and enhance the record of Leavy County. It would be my honor to be your clerk. I am passionate and I have a desire to show you this as citizens of Leavy County. If, um, I am only asking for your vote on August 11th, if you say choose to vote for me. Can I have something for you?
Do you want to say something?
Sure.
Thank you. Any questions for me?
Do you have any questions for?
I have a question. I don't keep voting today. I got a question. See, for instance, there's a problem, uh... Well, see, for instance, we got a person that went to court, blah, blah, blah. Are you affiliated with the state attorney?
Affiliated, no. Communicating with them, yes.
Well, you do communicate with them.
In a sense of scheduling and, but not on the side of them, no. I am in the middle, I have no, no say so either way. The state attorney, the elected state attorney in Gainesville will be over them. But I have communications with them as far as scheduling court and things like that. Um, but there's no expert communication at all within my office. Just, yes, judicial campaign.
Thank you.
All right, Manny, thank you. And, uh...
Good luck.
Thank you. You have a good day.
So I have, uh...
You should. Thank you so much.
Just getting feedback or something. All right, let's move on. Informational items upcoming. Your cemetery committee meeting is Wednesday, March the 6th, at 3:00 P. M. I'm assuming that's here for you.
Yep.
Presidential primary election is Tuesday, March the 19th, that is also here. But we will not have a meeting on that Monday night or that Tuesday. It will be the fall, wait, is it correct? It's going to be on the 25th. No, we're going to move it back a little bit, thank you. So, uh, remember that. Liza, don't you come up here, we're not here now.
Well, I call you.
You go. All right. The local session of order and vice board co-op meeting is Wednesday, March the 20th. That will be at 1:00 P. M. at Cedar Key. Better Together Job Fair is Thursday, March the 21st. That is at the First Baptist Church in Bronson, correct? That is at, uh, starting at 9:30, excuse me, 10:00 A. M., excuse me. Are we, are we going? Breadth with the mighty food bank, mobile food drive is due in March the 27th at 9:30. And our next code enforcement board meeting is Wednesday, March the 27th at 5:00 P. M. And that is also here. And with that, Ms. Tug, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, so first on my agenda tonight is first reading of ordinance 24 dash 01, regulating golf cart operations. So this is a result of our last meeting. Vice Mayor Phillips asked us about, uh, possibly putting ordinance together for golf carts. We got a resident, just for the, for the information, we got a resident who was on Pinkett Street recently and got a warning because she was in her golf cart and, um, we do not have an ordinance regarding golf carts. So we looked at the city of Williston's and the city of Cedar Keys, and to see what they had. Um, the one that we put together, this was just our first attempt at, of course, you guys can certainly let us know if there's something else you want in here or moved. Um, but basically, no golf carts will be allowed on State Road 24 or State Road 27, obviously, the major highways. Um, golf carts would have to have brakes, reliable steering, same tires, rear mirror, red reflectors, headlights, brake lights, turn signals, and a windshield. And remembering that anytime we put together an ordinance now, we have to also develop this business impact estimate, showing if there would be any sort of, um, impact to any businesses here in the town of Bronson. We do not believe that this would at all affect any of the businesses in town. Um, so again, this is just our first attempt at putting together a golf cart.
Well, what is Williston and Chequon, what do they got? They got to have brakes and lights and...
It's very similar, yes. We kind of took a, you know, mashed them all together and put what we thought would be kind of the best of all of them. Um, and again, some of this is actually, you know, there's a Florida statute, 316 dot 212, um, is regarding how old you have to be to operate a golf cart. It says must be operated by persons 18 or over, and those who are under 18, who are licensed drivers, are in possession of a law permit. So we put that in there as well.
Sue is correct. There's, there's only a small niche that, that we can have any, you know, roofed and haven't yet. Most of it is prescribed by state law.
We're going to put this in, uh, whenever we have finals, it's going to go in the newsletter, the newspaper, like, how do we publicize that we have this?
So whenever we do an ordinance, we have to put it in the paper. And now because it has this, this is impact estimated, it also has to go on the website. So it will be advertised. And if, from now on, if you guys want me to put in ordinances or resolutions or anything that have passed, and you want that in the newsletter, we can certainly do that. Um, it did, there was a question at the code enforcement board meeting on Wednesday about the fact that one of the people who we have a violation against was not notified of the ordinance regarding living in an R. V. And of course, we notified her that, you know, we don't send out, we don't have the resolution or the ordinance that we pass. So it might not be a valid idea to actually put them in the newsletter so people would have an idea, you know, when they get passed.
Keeping in mind that it's not an obligation.
I understand that, but I'm just saying it might be...
Presumably to know the law.
Correct.
It's a sometime.
Sue, I got the building for a general party.
I, I understand that, but just feedback, that's all.
This just authorizes people on city streets, is that right?
Yeah.
Still, still, uh, the county roads. You'll still get a ticket on Pinkett Street.
You would take it like this.
But they might not even stop her on Pinkett. Because they're, because they're, they only stopped her because we had nothing.
We had nothing.
I don't have a problem with them, just as long as people know they're still going to get a ticket if they're crossing the wrong road.
Yeah, that's, that's their cross, they're...
These, uh, these requirements by the golf cart there, uh, which are extensive, I mean, this is really not a golf cart. This is a, a, just like a, I don't know what it would be here for.
Well, under the legal terms that I read when I was researching it, the difference between the side-by-side and the golf cart legally was the speed. Like, the golf cart was technically not to go over 15 miles per hour, and the side-by-side go over 15 miles per hour.
Well, the reason why I'm saying that is I've got a golf cart. And it has no, it has, it has no turn signal. It does have a wind, you know, you get a little bit of a stancy.
But do you drive one on the road, or are you just driving on your property?
I knew that, I'm just driving on my property, you know, it's just for you, uh, everything else doesn't have a rear view mirror that puts on or reflects. But the one that, that, um, came for us, that one that she got, it doesn't have any of that in.
You don't have to know that stuff, I mean...
I mean, a golf cart, if, if you look at a golf cart, it looks from a, it doesn't have that stuff.
Okay.
Does not have brake lights. But that's some of the newest, some of the newest, they have, I don't know.
Doesn't have, what you said was obviously used to...
Brake light. Not a either.
The newer one, three, nine, but...
On a golf cart, I've never used.
Well, they, but this is specifically, sorry, I should've said this wrong. This is specifically between sunset and sunrise. If you're driving them on the road at night, you need to have these things. Sorry, I should've said that. So we did, we just need to require it's a subsection C, all golf carts operating on streets, all roads, the town has primary jurisdiction between the hours of sunset and sunrise. Must be equipped with headlights, brake lights, stairs, etc.
Yeah, because there's a difference between an actual golf cart, like, you're driving around a golf cart or a golf course or something during the day and then taking it onto the road, because then that, it changes the classification, I mean, even though it's still considered a golf cart.
Can I make a suggestion here? Because I, I don't know the answer, and you folks probably don't know the answer. Might have to do is just a little bit of research to see if these golf carts, by whatever name, come equipped routinely with this kind of stuff, or would have to be a custom job of some kind.
The newer one would have to cut, the newer one would come...
Mom and dad just got one, and they came up all over it.
Yeah, it comes along with them.
There are numerous, uh, strict legal conversion kits.
I mean, I work in the village, they got stuck down here, they got deer dead on the side of it.
You need to have all that at night anyway if you're going to ride on the street at night, so.
So as long as it says, but, yeah, and it does specifically say between hours of sunset and sunrise, you have to have this.
We let them have that at night and they get run over.
We already made that up before, from the, it's great.
What about crossing on Pines, from North Pine going to South Pine, crossing 27? Is the town going to have a...
But technically, yeah, that's supposed to go to the line.
No. They don't, they don't...
They can't touch a state highway or county road at all.
Golf carts cannot touch county roads or state roads unless there's...
You got to stay on this side.
Parking and walk across and then, uh...
You got to stay on this side.
Yeah, I'm on the line, I look like I can drive.
Why?
Oh, just get it out there in the yard and go around.
We're on the good side.
I'm on the good side.
Yeah, we're on the good side, we got dollars in the, save a lot.
Sure.
Well, I can lose out, yeah.
All right, so what, um, so what do we need to do with this now?
This is just a first reading. You're voting on the first reading if you, our statement is the way we present it.
Mr. Warren, you suggest that we go into a little bit more technical.
Well, no, I, I just was ignorant on the whole subject, but I'm hearing that for, for golf carts that are operated at night, it is not unusual or odd to have this additional equipment, and it seems to make sense. So, uh, my, my suggestion would be adopt it on first reading, we'll publish it, and the public is going to come in and have their say. And if there's a lot of grievances about it, maybe it needs to be reconsidered.
But I, I do it for that.
We run them on Steve Hatch all the time, and they have to have all that to operate at night down there.
But now during the daytime, they don't?
Yeah, during the day, they'll have to have it.
And it says that, but look at C, so C would be the stuff that you'd have to have during the day.
Golf carts aren't operated on streets, over which the town's primary jurisdiction shall be equipped with efficient brakes while we steer, secure tire grip.
be equipped with efficient brakes, wireless steering, same tire, rear mirror, red reflector. That's it.
So for the day, would that be okay?
I would maybe scratch that it has to have a reflector in front and rear.
You just need somebody to drive.
How hard is it to get a reflector and put it on?
Well, most people carry them on the back. I mean, you don't really have anywhere mounted on the front. Most people mount it on the back where the back seat, like, flips up where you hold on to, it's got low handrail. I would maybe just scratch the front part, have it on the rear.
I, I, I would be, my, mine don't think you gotta be already.
I feel like it is either, it don't matter. They ain't been driving on anyway.
I think you posted and then asked for input and then.
Well, like Mr. Moore said, we, we could go ahead and vote on it, have a first read, let the public come out and discuss it. Yeah. There's a, so, we're not being said.
I make the motion that we approve the first meeting, uh, reading of ordinance number twenty-four dash one.
Twenty-seven.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, see if you can follow this thing out.
All right.
Close, motion, Q, R.
I'm gonna make one thing to the record. I am presuming that that motion includes the business impact thing that goes with it, that we're approving that as well, which we're saying that this ordinance has no discernible effect on our business.
Yes.
Okay. So that's part of the.
All right, Nick.
All right, so next is second reading of ordinance twenty-three dash zero three, evaluation-based amendments of comprehensive plan. Okay, so this is going back a little ways. So our first public hearing on this, uh, took place on November sixth. You may remember Sandra Joseph from the New Central Florida Regional Planning Council came before the board and discussed all of the various elements that we needed to pass, uh, in order for this to be compliant with the state, basically. Um, so everything from traffic, sanitary, solid waste, drainage, recreation, open space, all kinds of stuff. Between then and now, the state has had time to come back and provide comment, and, uh, if you look at, right after the actual ordinance itself, there's two pages of comments from Florida Commerce. Um, one was regarding planning horizons, the second was lack of data and analysis, and the third was on water supply facilities work plan. So the first one, basically, they were saying you had to have two different planning periods, um, which we agreed to change. The first one was the comprehensive plan, now is a twenty-year period, and the capital improvement, um, element is now a, um, ten-year period. So, um, that was that first one. The second one was regarding lack of data. Um, they came back and said that the data, they use data for, um, population estimates, and there's no changes to level of service for a pot of water, sanitary sewer, that sort of thing. Again, these are just amendments to get us up to speed with what the state's requiring. And then the third was regarding the water supply facilities work plan. Um, so as everybody knows, we're in both the Southwest Florida Water Management District and the Swanee, um, River Water Management District, but our drain field is in Swanee River, so we don't need to comply with this ten-year, um, water supply facilities work plan. Southwest Florida is now mandating this ten-year plan where Swanee River was not. So because our drain field is in Swanee River, we don't have to comply with this. So basically, those are the only three, um, comments that we got, and all the different state agencies that we went to asking for comment. Um, the other thing that you're gonna see in your packet, you have a bigger version of this, but this is our new, um, future land use map. Two things that are new, really, that's you and my little tiny, um, copy here, but there was a little tiny, um, parcel of land right over here, as you're going out twenty-seven. It belongs to Ford, we got a cop truck.
Oh, Sonya Dragon.
Sonya Dragon, right. And his property has got this little jutting out area, so they truly added that to it. And then this little tiny box right over here, this is Bo Cox, Boeing, Candace Cox, that's their property that we annexed into the town. So those are the only, um, comments I want to run out to you. And then, obviously, this gigantic back in here was this whole, this is the comprehensive plan with all of the changes on it. Um, I asked Sandra if she wanted to come before the board today, but she said that she didn't think she, because we went over a pretty sensibly in the public hearing. So technically, this is the second public hearing, because we have to have a public, a second public hearing on this, and then you guys have to vote for a little in this. And then, basically, we will now be compliant. They have, I think there's another thirty-day period of which the state can then come back and respond again, but if there's no, nothing about going, then it's a hundred percent compliant. What'd you say, Calvin, sure?
He's got company, right?
He needs to officially open up a hearing.
Yes. We need to officially open up a public hearing.
For some reason, I can't see him.
It's because he's.
He's talking up there anyway.
And I remember the time when it was warm raining, and you kept passing me, scraping that rain.
That's on his end.
On his end?
He might not have a.
Need to officially open up a.
It's, it's.
We do?
Yes. We have to have all the second public hearing, yes.
Do we do that?
Yeah.
Then? Yes.
The mayor can do that.
All right. I will officially open up a meeting concerning. What's the title?
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive plan, senior.
Yeah, here we go, I'm big here. Our, we have another meeting for the, uh, town of Bronson, future, it's, public hearing, John of Bronson, copy has a plan, C P A twenty-three dash oh one, is now moving.
So?
We have any discussion?
Other than the changes that she already made, the other, this paper is the only other suggestions?
Correct. That's all we got back from the comment for the last, I don't know, three months.
And did she's already seen this?
Mm-hmm. This will keep it directed from comment from the New Central Florida Regional Planning
Any other discussion? Any other discussion, any input? Now we need to move ordinance twenty-three dash oh one, if that is the favor of the council.
Oh, three.
Okay, I agree, we do. We can vote.
Make a motion to accept a second reading of ordinance twenty-three dash oh three.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. On the second reading of our ordinance twenty-three dash oh three, evaluation-based amendment for copy has a plan. All those in favor, see if you can follow this thing out.
Aye. It was muted, it must be Keith. All right, so next is A B M Bumbled Energy Solutions Agreements, um, which raise you to talk about the news, give you a little, very brief synopsis of where we are. So, uh, there's two things before the council tonight is the, um, agreement with A B M, and then there is a, um, a resolution for the financing with Prime Capital. So, um, on the agreement with A B M, I put a couple things just to highlight here. The contractor that we're gonna be using is the same contractor on the quarter that actually did the testing of the meters. They're gonna be the ones that will be actually installing the meters. Um, so there's a whole section in here about, you know, their minimum liability that they have to carry, commercial liability, auto work comp liability, excess liability. Um, and then they're gonna send us an initial invoice for thirty percent of the total contract amount, um, to basically get started. Um, for work that's required, any sort of excess work, it would be billed at a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Those are applying to year rates, we're gonna keep that out. And then, most importantly, I wanna make sure everybody understands this, this project assumes a three percent water and sewer rate increase in year three through four. Year one and two are already taking the increases. We're about to take a twenty-five percent sewer rate, rate increase on May 4th, thus the second of the, the two twenty-fives that we passed last year. So we're going to have to build some sort of a C P I invoice, an increase every year going forward, because that, this is assuming that we're taking a hundred percent rate increase on water and sewer to meet this savings that we're gonna be saving the revenue share. So I wanna make sure we understand that. We talked about doing this a while ago anyway, after we got all the rate increases done, that we would do that, so that we don't have to have a big twenty-five percent rate increase, you know, this time.
So, it'll raise it in small.
Instead of big ones, correct. When we get to the financing, and I wanna make sure that everybody understands this, the total amount with A B M is six hundred, let me get this right, six hundred seventy-six thousand seven hundred and one dollars. That's for the entire project. And again, this is replacing all of our commercial water meters and putting a brand-new utility billing software. The financing through Prime Capital is for six hundred ninety-six dollars, six hundred ninety-six thousand five hundred and six dollars. So there's a difference of nineteen thousand eight hundred and five dollars. The difference is because we have to pay for the implementation in year one and year one of Koozie. Again, that's the software, the billing software. So that's not being financed, that's a putting into the finance that we're doing through Prime Capital. So that's why there's a difference of the numbers there. That's just a little brief synopsis. So you wanna go ahead and talk on your aspect?
You, you, you give such a great, no.
It's 'cause I read the whole thing today, so.
Well, Mr. Hill says his regrets tonight, he's having to be in Montgomery at a, a conference. Uh, you approved the, the resolution previously to move forward, it's been our pleasure over the last month, so we're looking for Warren to hammer out the details of the contract, and he's been a strong advocate on your behalf. So, uh, we, we'd love to get word and get you in the A M I water meter business, uh, with your approval tonight, uh, of, of our finished contract that Warren endorsed and also the financing. I will point out that I was real, real pleased when we looked at the financing, that when Sue showed me the financing and the representative sent me the cash flow for the, the financing y'all came in at, it actually came safely about three thousand dollars a year over what we were looking at. So it, it gave you a more positive cash flow. So, uh, the contract is for the amount that she quoted with us, plus the eighteen, nineteen, eight, two hundred is for the software, but then your annual software costs are built into the cash flow. You'll pay them from your funds, but the funds produced by the meter taken out will produce those, those funds. So you literally get into this at no cost to, to the residents of Bronson and actually have a positive cash flow up beginning in year one.
And there's a new cash flow analysis that I put in here today, so if you guys, um, if you wanna look at that, it's going at the end of the.
And, and I, uh, your, your loan agent provided me that a couple weeks ago with the, the pledge to his capitalization.
So the interest rate is five point five percent for twenty years.
Ray, is this, is this, uh, software, does it, uh, have bill into it, the updates and stuff like that that would possibly?
Yes, yes. Y'all, y'all pick the software. We had lots of software stuff this week. That's why it's not part of our product. We're just, just helping you get the money to buy it. But, yeah, it's constantly updated, and, and that's all part of that annual fee.
Quick question. This, this software, is it just gonna be compatible with the commercial meters that we're changing out, not the old?
Well, what it does, it gets you into the A M I business with the commercial meters. It is compatible, and then when you do the residential, they'll just add right into the system.
So that the residential meters, the other four hundred and some meters?
That's right. They'll just add right into the business software.
It, it will handle both, as I did ask that, because initially, we're gonna have the commercial on the A M I, or we're still gonna have the residential on the A M R until the C V G catches up. And yes, it can handle doing both. It's, this is a lot, this is a big project.
Yeah, and I guess with the, with your residential now, though, since this contains, includes an A M R reader that you can derive by on the residential before you get the change.
Okay. Any, any?
We're looking forward to getting started.
So Ray, I did have one question for you when I was reading over the agreement today. So you, in here, you have a section on the warranty, it's actually on page three of forty-six in your packets. It says contractor warrants that the materials and ownership provided by the contractor under this agreement will be free from defects for a period of twelve months after customer's acceptance or beneficial use of the systems or any portion thereof. So I guess my question is, you put in a brand-new meter, it breaks in year five, and we've got it financed for twenty. What happens at that point?
Good question.
Well, it, it, truly, it is a standard manufacturer's warranty. You wouldn't bother them today and finance for their kid if one moved in year five, it would be on you to replace it. So it is just, I mean, it, I, I will tell you that, that when things like this go wrong, twelve months is typically a good period, that they'll, that it's not a, a defect that's gonna happen over time, it's gonna happen for a period.
Okay.
But it, but it is truly a standard manufacturer's warranty for anything you buy.
But when we talked a while ago about, you've been having this whole conversation about warranty and savings and whatnot, and you kept saying, you know, based on what you guys, when you're doing your M V, whatever that term is, you're, you're going and checking everything, right? If you were to find that something was failing at that point, you would be replacing it, but wouldn't that mean that it wasn't under warranty any longer?
Well, it, it's, it's not a twenty-year warranty on, on every water meter. I mean, you would be paying four million dollars, if it was, not six hundred thousand, some huge number, but it, it is a standard manufacturer's warranty, and it's only liability beyond that.
Okay, gotcha. So even when they replace the residential ones, that's all we're gonna get?
However, it is possible that you could be able to take a, a meter that you have and stop, and add the A M I component to it without having to completely replace that meter.
Okay.
So it's very little cost.
Ray, do me one favor, and it's not gonna influence what's happening, and I, I don't think, but for my peace of mind, could you send me a copy of the manufacturer's warranty?
Uh, we certainly can. I don't have it, only.
I don't have it.
That we can do.
Thank you.
Okay.
I got one more question. But when we get the other meters in, will you all come out and put them in the system, or do we put them in the system?
No, your, your software vendor will help you put them in the system. I mean, that's what, that's what, I mean, that, they'll probably, y'all will know how to do them by then. I mean, I feel like Kesty's gonna.
We're, we're working on doing that now.
And, and first, we, that's why we don't get involved in software. Software is for, for, for y'all to do, but y'all are gonna learn how to, to add a meter to the system on your own.
Right. The goal, Chris, at this point is, I gave them, uh, when our J U S contract renews, which is in July, so I said it would be really lovely if we could not renew our J U S contract and have Koozie in place at that point. So their goal is to shoot for the end of June, so that everything would be done in the next four months, um, assuming it all goes well. Four months is the goal, so, which will be very exciting.
Right, I think it's just a matter of.
So the meters installed and everything in four months?
Yeah, this is the software.
What is the, what is the timeline on?
Oh, uh, excuse me, we, we expect that as soon as we get the meters in, which they've been trying to deliver for about six months.
Yeah, they keep trying.
And we could hurt this around in two to three months. So it may be all ready to go live pretty close to the same time.
Again, off the residential. And we're still waiting on the environmental review to come back on the C V G. So the residential probably will be done for, I think that grant ends sometime in twenty-twenty-five. So residential, right here, by five, I'm concerned.
Okay, uh, any other comments? And with that being said, I will retain a motion to, can we agree on? On the agreement. We have certain agreements, too.
I got one. The, this, um...
The, this nineteen oh eight oh five with software, that's just a one-time thing. For the startup.
It's the start, so roughly half of that is for implementation, so we wouldn't have to pay that again. But the software costs about ten thousand dollars a year. It's, that's why you're getting so much more than what we have covered. We pay seven twenty-five a year for J U S, this is going to be almost ten thousand. But we're eliminating like four different systems that we use right now that will be approximately ten thousand. Because we literally are using, you know, the notification system and we're using Iorgs to do what's work order. We've got all these different systems that we're going to get rid of and now just this. And think about the fact that we're not going to be allowed to send bills, we don't have to print bills in the same way. There's a lot of different things in there. Our guess is probably half the people will end up doing electronic.
And that's what this does?
You get to pick what you want, you want electronically, you want it mailed, you want both. You want texted, you're going to have all that yourself. You can set it up on auto pay, you can receive a bill.
It costs us almost four hundred dollars.
Right? Just a mail bill.
Just a mail bill.
Oh, I see.
And that doesn't include how much it costs by those.
But that's, we're talking about residential and this is not going to be yet, yeah?
Not yet.
Not yet.
The bill was just not relevant.
And then he also said, well, he didn't say this time, but he had also said that we were missing money from being read incorrectly or meters not working correctly, and we're going to recover that money going forward.
You're going to pick up funds from savings from, from software and not have to drive by and spend gas to read these meters. You're going to pick up money from the rate increase and you're going to pick up money from meter actors. And, and that money, to answer your question, that, that increase in revenue covers both the lease payment and the annual software costs.
All right, please, your counsel.
I make a motion to accept AVM's interlokal solution agreement.
I second.
I have a motion and a second to accept AVM's multiple interlialation agreement. All those in favor, six of the others say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Here.
All right, so resolution twenty-four oh two, I might need to read it for the record, the title. Twenty-four oh two of the governing body of the town of Bronson, Florida, authorizing pursuant to the laws of the state of Florida, collectively authorizing law, the occurring lease obligations in any amount automatically six hundred ninety-six thousand five hundred and six dollars to be evidenced by the execution, delivery of an equipment lease purchase agreement in an equipment schedule with respect to the acquisition, purchase, financing, and leasing of certain equipment for public benefit. Authorizing the execution and delivery of documents required in connection therewith, and authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of transactions contemplated by this resolution. I had to correct the second page because they had a different resolution number. So that was on the new pages up in your, in your packet. They called it resolution twenty-four dash zero three something, but I'm going to continue the motion twenty-four.
I'll check. All right. Yes, we can't do one without the other. I did, please, your counsel.
I move to adopt resolution twenty-four dash zero two.
Second.
Again, we have a motion and a second on resolution twenty-four dash oh two financing to prime capital. All those in favor, six of the others say aye.
Aye.
Vote, same motion.
All right, next is discussion on our interlocal agreement for animal control with the city of Williston. So again, for the, this benefit, the reason that we're discussing this is because we currently have an interlocal agreement for animal control with Levy County. However, Levy County has notified us that they no longer want to honor the interlocal agreement, so we're trying to scramble and find our own resources. So basically what this, interlocal agreement is saying is that we would continue to keep our current animal control officer, Celeste Crawford, during normal business hours, Monday through Friday, eight to four thirty. She would pick up a dog, she would bring it to the city of Williston, their animal shelter. Outside of those hours, so nights, weekends, holidays, if somebody was to call, say, the sheriff's office or we give them a number to call, the city of Williston's animal control officer would then respond. They would take the dog to, again, their shelter. We highlighted on page two of this, that's eight thirty-three, thirty-three for a month. That's what we originally had merged with the county when we talked to them about it. That's up for debate, obviously, it doesn't have to be ten thousand dollars a year. If you guys want to do something else, we can. This would take effect for not immediately and then it will be for a long year. Counselor Reyes and I are going before the city council tomorrow night, the city of Williston's going to be voting on this. So I just wanted to kind of have your blessing before we go to their council tomorrow night.
Did you spoke with anybody about this?
I spoke with, Friday, I was in a meeting with Laura, the city planner. She and I were the ones that actually worked on this together. So she thinks that, you know, they would pass it at this point. And they have the resources more than they needed. They actually just hired the replacement for their, they had somebody who was their animal control officer and a code enforcement person who resigned or retired. They just hired a new person to take over that position, so.
So just out of curiosity, if they get full, they can't take anything in?
Yeah, that's the concern of mine too, honestly. I mean, I feel like we would be right back in the same position that we're in the county right now, which is when someone calls, they can't do anything.
Yeah, and they just had like a full litter of puppies jump out from their doors this morning.
Yeah. I'm a little bit upset, and that's definitely something we need to address with that because.
Well, when they went over there, they said they keep bays open for animal control all the time. They don't let wag fill up or stuff. They keep bays open for animal control all the time.
The other thing too is it's very known for animal control, city or county, to become too full. And that's normally when they will start to euthanize animals. It's why they have to time.
Probably just change the leaving cannon to not euthanize.
Oh, no, that's, that's a huge kill shell there. But that's when they normally start to do euthanizations because they get too full. It's normal for a state.
Well, Williston's got a good turnaround in adoptions because they have a lot of big events.
They push, yeah.
Yeah, no big adoption.
Yeah. I think more than county does.
About a hundred percent, yes.
Well, I apologize for your.
We're trying.
Your effort in this.
We're trying.
They got a new room ice facility, me and Sue went to it after our meeting with the city manager and the park and all that. And same guy who gave money to build the county, anyone gave them money, like eight hundred thousand dollars to build theirs.
So we go through the park and there's a person like walking their dog in the park. We could take the owner and the dog, right?
Sure.
With me. For your area. This woman.
Except.
They passed like three signs going in saying, no dog.
What's happening, everybody didn't confront, they're saying that it's a service.
So we did have somebody call. They presented with their servant animal and their training, and it's a search and rescue dog. And they need a place to run them. And it was verified, and they were given permission, one person, one.
I don't know, I haven't given it back yet.
But that's, they were in the training for the search and rescue, for missing children and stuff. So they were running their dog in that area.
And that's supposed to happen with the little thingy and all that?
Not search and rescue. No, I mean for the service. I don't know the law, I'm confused, they want to be, but it's also illegal to ask them to show proof of.
Their protection and adult protection and even the removal of, well, the dogs up there is going to eat.
Well, the dogs can turn them up.
But, but that's what search and rescue dogs do, they go through, that's where, they normally take them in the mountains and out in the desert.
A lot of dogs.
Not, not, she's not my dog.
So, okay, so my question is, if we can't ask them if the animal is a trained dog and it, something happens to somebody out there.
Who's responsibility is that?
That's on them. Because it's a service dog.
If it's involved in a bite incident, then the sheriff's office and the county can do their investigation. Willis and then.
That's the thing, but if they're saying, if they're saying it's a service dog and that service dog bites somebody.
Then they have to prove it.
That's a whole, that's there, that's nothing to do with the city.
Yeah, then that's.
So I have a question, what do you mean by you cannot ask these people to prove it's a real?
Because it's a hipper violation.
You can't ask them to upset.
I can't ask them.
Can't say let us hear your name.
No, what you have to do, you have the.
The dogs are supposed to be registered.
But we don't have. I don't, you can't legally, it'd be like if you had an illness and you said, no, I am clinically depressed or whatever.
So, hang on, you guys know what we're talking about. We will not board a dog that cannot get, where the owner cannot prove that the dogs are service dogs. They're, without even requesting why, you know, what the, the dog is smelling or anything, you are supposed to get, they're supposed to get a certain certification, which is legal, not as, oh, it's emotional, it's important, it's not. Those dogs don't get the same certification than those that, you know, if you're, if you need them because your sugar goes low or if you go into, how do you call that?
That, that shock.
A shock, so when you, seizing, thank you very much. So when there is different, those dogs have a specific certification.
But if you can't ask them to see it?
You, and here's the difference.
We don't ask them.
I can tell you this, working at Julie's part-time, when somebody walks in with a service dog, it is against the law for me to say you have to produce paperwork. It's against the law. You have to take.
That's very interesting.
It is. Yours would make a difference because you want to, it means that you're going into international waters. That's a whole different ballgame. And they're paying you. They're paying, I'm not being paid. They want to get a lot. They are going to do what they got to do.
So there's only things to like dogs and cats, right?
Correct.
That is very interesting.
Oh, wait, they did have cats.
No, no, you have a cat problem.
Cats, yes.
Okay.
So I have another question, you were saying about Williston, do they have their, so Williston has a shelter like?
Brand new.
And they have a vet?
They have a, they have a, they own, they own called that.
Yeah, they contracted a vet office.
Yeah, but this shelter, here David doesn't have one.
They're hired.
They're hired.
Yeah, they put ninety-three thousand dollars, yeah.
They bought it back down.
No, it's still not.
When they get out of vet school, they can find a job anywhere at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. How do I know? I have two little girls, I know that that's exactly what they do, okay? And, and that's, it's not just them too, it's every kid that will come out, or two media kids, but anyway. They will come out, but then they put, they got that whatever P I O person whose first thing was, hey, put some pictures of Bronx on our Levy County. That was our first order on, on Facebook. Anyway, long story short, she's paid a hundred and what, a hundred and twelve thousand? Yet they won't bring for the vet, they will not bring it up to one twenty. I mean, that's mind-blowing to me.
That's a serious subject.
I can, I can.
The county knows.
Right, that has nothing to do with that.
I know, I know, I was just forcing my frustration, sorry.
But they have a meeting tomorrow, and if you want to go and express your feeling, you are more than welcome. Just tonight, just try to get to it.
Sorry, but no, but I mean, I wanted to make sure that at least if we're sending our animals over there, then there is a vet to take care of them.
They legally have to have a vet, the county's got a contract, we're going to, they do outside stuff, so.
That was the reason for them to, that was the whole reason why they were trying to leave up with Williston is because of them having a vet.
Gotcha.
Okay, Mr. Warren, this interlokal agreement is satisfactory, you.
Informed, yeah, yeah. But I, I, I don't know, aren't you going to present it to Williston? Or is it going to be presented to Williston tomorrow?
No, right.
So, or you really, you don't need to sign it, all you really need to do is, is approve the form of it and say, if you agree with this, Williston, we agree with this. That's basically what, that's all you're looking for.
Yeah, we just want to know if you guys are okay with the money, are you okay with the terms?
Yeah.
Can you work with it?
I don't think you can get a lesson on it.
Well, the finances and everything is within our realms.
We're going to make it be in our.
It's going to have to be.
You don't really have a choice.
You don't have a choice.
We're going to be hoping to make that.
It's ten thousand dollars or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, we're going to be hoping to make that bid.
You remember that, that ten thousand dollars is going toward their person that they're paying overtime, it's toward the vet bill, you know, yeah, all the things that we don't want to do.
Well, I understand, I have to ask these questions because, you know, you're.
You're the mayor. So you're the mayor.
If you are responsible for the finances, you know, the municipality, you have to ask to the sanctuary. And you read it, the two hundred and fifty thousand or whatever, you know, it takes to put your facility in like this. But a year's going past when we did not figure these things. Like I say, it was, you take care of your own, so to say, I know there's days of coming and going, but there's still some things that you know you have to pass on to yourself.
My biggest concern is that for the last three years, that every time we get these calls, we ping pong them back and forth between the county. So the person will call the county, the county says, call the town of Bronson. We say, sorry, we don't have that, you get a call. The residents are just, they're not being serviced by us at all. This is just, it's terrible experience without.
And when you do this, you open up the, and the response situation where you have these people that, let's use our chicken situation right now. So it's, you know, a little bit of mushroom from that. But.
So with the ten thousand dollars, I see some about twenty-five dollars per, that's what? We will give them additional, that's what we will.
So we charge twenty-five dollars per animal and they charge twenty-five dollars per animal. So they're going to pick it up, like we put it on their one. So yes, if they're picking it up, we give them.
As a voluntary pickup.
If they clean it.
If they clean it, correct.
Don't want it after.
The dog, it is an own civil different story.
Yeah.
Do we, do we know if the person that had us pick up the animals before, if they left, have they moved? They did, and they just got charged with party against them for animal cruelty. I mean, animal cruelty, because they have way into the, that's why I, just whatever you.
Yeah, they left, they left the other two dogs we couldn't take in their place.
Oh, we said that was wrong, we said that was going to happen. They knew it was going to happen.
They just left them. He just left the dogs.
So the county came in on that, right? Because it's animal cruelty and the sheriff's office are involved and they're trying to press charges.
Where do you leave them?
They decide the house. No from the water.
And just like that, that's been, over the last twenty years, that's been the reason why, you know, landlords don't allow that.
I understand that, yeah. Okay. Your counsel.
Do we have to vote on it or are we saying to just approve it?
You do have to vote, that, that you approve, you approve the form of it.
I make a motion that we accept the interlocal agreement for animal control represented to Williston city council.
You have a motion in a sentence, all those in favor? Six of the five, yes, aye?
Aye.
All right, that one should be pretty easy. So this came from John McDonald from E O C. In your packet, there's a statewide mutual aid agreement that we need to sign. So basically what this is, is this agreement's needed during any type of disaster, so that one municipality can help another, or a county can help another municipality. We can request assistance under this agreement for a major disaster or a catastrophic disaster. Any request will have to be in writing within five calendar days. If we were the requesting party asking for assistance, we would have to provide food, water, and shelter to the assisting party, if they cannot help us. And then the assisting party has forty-five days to develop a full reimbursement package for services rendered. So basically this will be, if we, if we sign onto it, it just goes into effect automatically every year. So all of the municipalities are being asked to sign us.
They already had one placed, they just, they re-up, they re-up it every couple of years.
Yeah, it's up there from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three, you want to take some, yes.
Make a motion to accept statewide mutual aid agreement?
I second.
All right, probably the second, to be accept statewide.
All right, probably move to second. Say we accept statewide mutual aid agreement, twenty-three, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda, the agenda right, discussion of dirt bikes. Um, and I may not have done a whole lot of research on this, but I did a little bit for you guys. Again, Vice Mayor Phillips brought this up last time regarding, you know, we have had some issues in town with dirt bikes. The only thing I could find in the Florida statutes was, uh, three-one-six-two-zero-seven-four regarding ATVs, and then three-one-six-two-one-one regarding the equipment of motorcycle and moped riders. So there are, um, state statutes governing these things right now. So for instance, with ATVs, um, if you're under sixteen, you have to wear a helmet and safety goggles. Don't have to if you're over sixteen. Um, cause that makes sense, yeah. And then for motorcycles, if you're over sixteen, protective headgear and goggles are required. If you're over twenty-one, this was interesting, if you're over twenty-one, you have ten thousand dollars in medical payments on your auto policy, you don't have to wear that gear. How you're gonna prove that you have that insurance? I don't, that's a whole other issue. Um, so I didn't know if you guys were interested in passing something else, or if you just wanted to follow through the state statutes. I wasn't real sure what, what the concern was. I think you said noise and people not stopping, as I recall, right?
Yeah, that's what the, um, my neighbor, my neighbor is the one that was talking about the, uh, Ms. Nelson is the one that was questioning about the dirt bikes. Um, it was the noise and the, for safety reasons, them not stopping the stop signs.
Cause they're not supposed to be on the road, damn.
Yeah, they're not supposed to be on the road, period. Exactly.
That's a violation of state law.
That was what I ran from the cops in town two days ago, so.
Who was?
Four, I'm running through from the cops in town two days ago, so.
On ATVs?
They were doing dirt bikes down, or wheelies down twenty-seven, the cops chased them down.
Yeah, but nothing to say, it's a, off of the, fault under the sheriff's office. It's a state law.
Yeah, and that's what I was thinking, like, anytime in the future when they have something like that, they just need to call the sheriff's.
You say again, do anything.
I think if we drive, there will be overregulation.
I told her to call the sheriff's department, but. So I think, but I think that that's how we got into the situation of the sheriff's department pulling over the golf cart. Because, and mind you, that was my thing with the golf cart, when they pulled over, they pulled over several in the next couple of days.
Really?
Because, yes, they pulled over several. Um, but I think the officer was trying to make a point of, you know.
And the cop is just rude.
Yeah, they're getting calls, but we can't say, oh, we didn't see that, but we're gonna go talk to whoever's on the dirt bikes.
But I think with the golf cart, there's some other issues going on with the golf cart in the city, with this specific golf cart. Rumors, and that's why they can't bring the golf cart. If you think about it, you'll quit.
No, 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 I know exactly what you're saying.
But I think that's why the police are going after the golf carts. I think that you're triggering.
No, that's not what.
They can't, they can't go, one person, not go at everybody.
They're pulling, they're pulling everybody.
That's hard. They, they gotta get everybody.
They're trying to pull over the Rangers, or pull others right behind the racetrack. I got, I got a hundred and seventy-eight dollar ticket, dude. They ain't gonna, they pull over everybody.
But your dirt bikes, once it gets a certain motor size, it falls under state law because it then becomes like a motorcycle. You have to have fish, you have to have that.
And if they're running while doing it, then they stop.
I, I personally was not, I was not trying to, uh, bring about anything else for the dirt bikes. I just was remaining Ms. Nelson's message.
Well, that, it, I kinda understand what she's talking about, because it's like your Sunday afternoon and for the next two hours, that's all you need.
Yeah.
You're not even talking about dirt bikes, you're just, oh, yeah.
Yeah, the cul-de-sac, they come, they come to the cul-de-sac, they turn around, and then they gun it all the way back. So I don't think, I don't think her house is as loud as mine.
Right.
So are you hearing it because they're on the road still, or are they like in the forest of?
No, on the road. They're on Main Street.
Yeah.
On Alpass Street, on Foundry, on, yes.
Herburg and, uh, Hurst Street, they go to the end, they turn around, and they gun it all the way back.
There, there's been a lot more police presence in Bronson than last week because.
Yes.
They're trying to catch them.
Yes.
They already, I.
They get out in court and down Marchburn too.
I, I, yeah, they, my buddy's got, um, he's one of the deputies, and he searched one the other day, and arrested two of them, and I ran from him. Cause they figured out where they lived, so.
So they literally are on the money, the sheriff's office.
They were doing wheelies down twenty-seven and then.
It's easy to outrun the sheriff's office in a dirt bike.
If you know where you're going, you're gonna outrun the dirt bike. Wow. Are these kids?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I can follow up with Sheriff and Paul.
Okay.
Okay, next, um, there's something in your packet, but every year around this time, we are normally getting requests from Commissioner John Meeks and Cameron Asbell regarding, uh, making a donation to Country Run Spurs. This was, um, for the Swanee River Fair. Um, we, for some reason, we didn't get one this year, but Mayor Pardon and Councilman Ray said they just got theirs in the mail today. So we'll probably get ours the next day or two. Um, and the last year, we gave them five hundred dollars. So I did ask them to give me something in writing, assuming you guys wanna make the same donation, again, you know, feel like you can get something in writing, but. So I wanna make sure.
That is the, um, thing, does all the, eh, the Bronson picture of the four H kids providing the animal affair?
No, no, I mean, the Country Run Spurs, who's that?
John and Cameron.
We just wanted to put on the agenda today because otherwise we don't have a meeting until the twenty-fifth, and the spares over by that time?
Yes.
So it's over.
Yeah, it's over. It's the group they put together and they go and build, and they have seven people trying to do it individually.
All right.
I make a motion to donate the, he said five hundred, five hundred to Country Run Spurs?
Aye, second.
Probably move to second. All those in favor? See if I can bring that up. All right, make a motion.
All right, last on my agenda is, um, Russell Mitchum right now has two-hundred-and-forty-four point seven-five hours of vacation time. And again, by our employee handbook, we're not supposed to approve more than two-hundred-and-forty hours. Um, so we're requesting to cash in another eighty hours, and hopefully that'll keep him under the two forty. He just, he needs to take a vacation, though, he's.
That, that ain't.
Yeah, we, we do this every year for him, because he just takes a vacation.
Make a motion to pay out Russell Mitchell's eighty hours of vacation?
Absolutely, aye, second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second, pay out Russell for eighty hours of vacation time, every year, same thing. All right, so, uh, all those in favor? See if I can bring that up.
Aye.
Go, same, here, you said vacation. All right, Curtis, come out here and talk.
Just briefly, this, um, a quote for the fence around the wheel park at one hundred and five section. Uh, there's two, for the first one is just, um, six-foot, ten-foot gate, uh, with no lattice. And the second one is the black iron covering. We don't make a difference, the chief sits here, so he may want to decide what he want. Just something I was working on, when Dennis was here, I had a base of fence that came out here to give a quote. He had gave a quote within his country, good on it, so. This company is the company that did all the lift stations, the early lift stations, Hercules, out of California.
There's nobody around here?
Plus, father and son, because I can't. Paul and Bill, um, yeah, um, another guy, we used to do some fence for us, him and his dad.
I don't know if that is C G, Clemson, or C C or something.
Four months out?
Who is what? I just had a busy job getting to do that. Four months out.
Excuse me?
No, okay.
Can you hold some figures on?
Um, thirty-five hundred and four thousand.
Jeff, you got anything to say about these?
Um, I'm not sure how much area is gonna be cut off. Around that.
One of the thirty-six square feet, fifty-six. And ten feet of that's gonna be the, uh, gate.
How tall's the chain link?
Six foot.
Six foot.
It's commercial days.
Yeah, the guy that installed the well pump for us, he was the one that recommended we put a fence around it. So it can't just go in.
I think you should, as it's water system, a great one.
You need extra control panel there.
What's the difference between the first S T and the second S T?
The first one's just ch- changing, the second one's the black vinyl there.
Oh, that, so you can't see what's behind it?
Yep.
What if you, uh, the rest of the, like, pump stations and stuff like that, that's just.
Yeah, that was the company I was talking about. They didn't get back with you.
That's it, yeah.
I think we only have the lattice on that one, right?
Well, that's, that's been there, no, Margaret Street. Keep some black on the smell.
I don't think we have the lattice.
You don't, you're reading worse than.
Apparently the lattice kept the smell out.
Why do you suppose that, yeah, I do, I do. Yeah.
Can I call somebody tomorrow and see if they can do this? Or is this something that matters? I just, I, I know one other local person that I just, it's a, one of our, um, I have their kids in my class, and this is what they do. They just thought it's a gym sign, so I just wanted to offer it to them because they are from Bronson. I mean, if they say no, no, but I'll, I'll call you tomorrow.
Just give them the quote.
Yeah, I'm gonna say please and say, this is what we got, offer, can you beat this? What is it? Huh? No, I mean, this is what we need, what that price.
Problem versus, that's a great deal for.
Okay, on this specific.
Yeah, don't.
I mean, I was gonna show it to, from your saying, this, this is what we need, what can you do this for?
Use the specs.
Huh?
Sure.
Just give them the specs.
Yeah, specs is all you need, bad.
Yeah.
You wanna, you wanna vote table?
Yeah, to put it on the table.
Yeah.
Make a motion to table, so we can meet it.
Aye, second.
Probably move to second. All those in favor? See if I can bring that up.
Aye.
Those in favor, yes. All right, entry fire chief, Mr. Jeff Modyu, come up here and talk for us.
I'm a little busy this past month. Hundred and ten incidents, uh, eighteen different types, uh, seventy-three of them were medicals, which is kind of typical. Vehicle accidents, a couple of sheds on fire. Mostly lip assists and helping EMS. Kind of typical for this time of year, so that's, that's it. We've got pumper back, so it's back, cleaned up and outfitted, it's back in service, a brand-new one. So we got the last thing that's been, uh, front bumper worked on, it's a hundred and ninety dollars. Getting that done, so it's back. You know, one guy's picked it up in last week, so we're looking at the budget now to see if it's something. We want to try to take equipment off the current engine and put on there and get that one in the shop for somebody that cares for fixing. Or we're gonna just need to, we're about to get some more hose and put that one outfitted also at this time. Kind of tight on budget and start talking about hose and stuff like that, I could do it, that's a good script. So we're looking at that. Then this did. Dennis.
Oh, my God.
Sorry, Gail, he's been a great help. I'll just let you know, he's been helping get in the all the programs and stuff like that. But as far as the, the trade, the fear we're talking about going for the, the pumper and that, there's nobody around here that can actually repair the pump or something that's real wrong. So seeing that we have two trucks now, I don't think we need the third. So we kind of like drop that whole thing, and we'll figure out what to do with the, the old pumper, whether it would still be offered to that guy for a dollar or whatever, y'all wanna do with it, or if we just put it surplus and try to sell it that way. But again, see us putting a third engine in there that we're probably not gonna use very often, and have all that. To along with it, but, so.
And we wouldn't be able to sell it for parts or something?
Well, just that it's thirty-four years old, you know? Usually a truck that age will go in and repurpose the whole thing, someone that's a hundred dollars, I don't think anybody would still want that truck. It is, it's serviceable. I mean, we can get it and auction it off, if that's what y'all wanna do or whatever. But I don't think we need to put it in service for some of it. You know, we only have a handful of folks responding right now anyway. You know, we've got a six-person engine plus two in the tanker, that people will cover, or a bit of skin responds on there. So we're, we're not gonna really drive it.
Is it when they're, is it when they want to do the swap? Is it when they want to do the swap, see what kind of duration we can make to us for there?
Yeah, that can be done. But I just, I just think we need to follow through with that at this point.
Interesting to explain that too. I mean, we appreciate the help. Sometimes, some things, keep it moving.
Yeah.
They're looking in the mouth.
I don't wanna have a station full of equipment that we don't just, you know, if we don't use it, then we're gonna start a whole vacuum. So we'll move on from that. We're in the process of applying for human grants for some bunker gear, try to get that, it's due end of the week. So we're working with the grant person on that. Cause then that last Thursday, I was out of town, so we got the ball rolling on that. But it allows to get, it's a AFG mini-grant, you call it, it's a seventy-five thousand dollar grant. It's a five percent match. We can get, when he says a bunker gear, a couple thousand dollars. So we got people sharing gear right now, and several are out of, out of date, um, certification time, so. This'll get us back up to where we need to be, I think, pretty quick. There's some other grants we'll be looking at coming up. Uh, some for skid units will be coming up, deadline to March twenty-first. We'll look at that and see what we can do with that, looking at different ways to do it, so. Uh, and then big grant will come later, but I don't wanna tie us too tight with going for huge grants where we got a big match that we don't, we can't afford, so. We're going to work with the pretty poor few right now and get things going, sort of like you say, from where you feel. And really, that's everything where you're going right now, like I said. He killed something, I'll go with it, so I appreciate his help, and we'll keep pushing forward. We're working on station stuff. We've got, you know, the station duties that will be rolling out at the next meeting, which will be next Monday. So, um, it'll be a list of items that they have to do every day, and certain days of the week, they just go into certain equipment and do extra stuff on the dose. That way they're just not sitting around the station and dealing with that. I also dug up, uh, the old SOGs and things like that, that kind of specify the thing. I guess they were trying to redo a lot of that stuff, but I know none of this has been passed, so I'm gonna fall back to what the town had passed before. And any additional things we can go with that, because we got personal handbook, we got the SOGs, which is the standing operating guidelines for on-scene operations and things like that. Goes into operating the trucks and firing use and all that stuff that's in there. So I'm gonna respond, I'll respond with. Then we then into that is the, the kind of first of all, the protocols. That's our three guiding documents, as this kind of say. I printed out some copies of those, and we have two copies of all that, so they know what's going on. So things will slowly progressing, um, we got good feedback from staff so far. So, things will slowly progressing, um, we got good feedback from staff so far, you know, about changing, things like that. We got a couple of us still working on to get reports done. Kind of checking Gail on it and she's got a plan to address that, so I think we're, we're starting to move in the right direction then.
Good. Is there a sign down there when you're on the way, like, coming from Chief One, before you get to the fire station, that kind of lets you know that there's...
DOT's got them, I, the High Government approved from DOT a while ago, but they're waiting on us to put a rubber on the fire alarm sign because they have to have a sign that identifies it, we have to have a sign that identifies it's a fire station before they open theirs up.
Okay.
Now, Luke, who did the contract work, is coming here tomorrow.
Yes.
And he's looking at, uh, possibly for the spring door system, and we're talking about installing that sign to the front. Now, there is, there is a fire truck sign on Main Seven before you get here, coming from Chief. Is there? Mm-hmm.
Do we have a date for the bigger box?
It's on Jeff's third one to do the rest.
Okay. Yeah, wait for it to show up and then we'll work on getting it installed.
Wait for you on the sign placement though, right, in that little grassy part of the room?
Yeah.
That was good with hers, two per, I know, water line, I'm sure they're somewhere.
Water or sewer line.
So, yeah.
We should implant your room, cause we need about a three-foot, a four-foot block in the ground to hold that thing up, it's pretty heavy. Catch a lot of wind.
When it says gas, does someone come and do the paddle around the fire hydrant so you can do that news too?
Yeah, say you got Luke first, we get tomorrow and look at the, uh, paddle around the water, uh, fire, find out where the leak is by the door and to deal with the sign.
That's it.
All right.
Do you have something?
Do you have a prescription or something?
The sign?
Is something wrong with it or we just don't have it?
We have it, it's just...
You haven't started a long night.
We've had it for seven months and it's had no, but it's in the back of the station.
All right, yeah, thank you so much.
I don't know if you saw the Chief One just passed their finger box, did you see?
Um, I did, I think, yeah, I did, I did when I was looking up the ordinance for the, uh, I was on there.
Finger boxes don't even count.
Really?
Chief One just passed theirs.
Copy that.
I know, right?
All right, uh... Mr. Moore?
Yes. All right, the subject is the situation regarding virtual attendance at meetings. You will recall, we talked about it at the last meeting, and there was a certain amount of uncertainty, who had what rights? So I did some research. I think the seminal, as lawyers and judges like to say, the seminal authority on this is an A G opinion going back to two thousand and twenty. And the basic opinion says that if three people, well, in our case, three, you do have five, a majority, a quorum is physically present, not virtually, but physically present, and there are other people attending the meeting, uh, who are part of the board, virtually, they can participate, it is a legal meeting. What it does go on to specify with enough particularity for me is exactly what those attending virtually can do, if there are any limitations, or if they have exactly the same scope of authority as they would have if they were sitting in a chair. I suspect they probably do, but the Attorney General doesn't make it that clear. Uh, then there is also some language in the state's manual that governs the sunshine law that suggests the same thing, but says that the virtual attendee needs to have a reason, they have to be disabled or discommoded or in, in some way unable to attend, and it's vague. So, assuming that that's the case, you're still left with a question. If an individual cannot attend the meeting and proposes to appear virtually, what do they have to establish in order to satisfy the requirement, whatever the requirement is, of being able to appear virtually? No one has set forth any standards, and the question is, who establishes those standards? The state, the board, or if the individual simply announces, look, I can't come to the meeting, I want to attend virtually? That's okay, it may be, I don't know, but it's not clear. All right, uh, the Attorney General isn't the final say on any of this. An Attorney General's opinion can be overruled by the courts, so again, there is no certainty. And one looks at the situation, you've all been familiar with, with cases where somebody who's rushed out of the hospital to Washington to Congress to vote, because in the Congress of the United States, if you ain't there, you ain't voting. So if they need somebody to, to, to vote for a majority, to pass a bill, and it's important, there have been cases where they bring them by ambulance from the hospital to the, uh, the Capitol Building just to vote. I say that because we're dealing with a situation where people are aware of that, and one can say, well, if you can't vote in the Congress of the United States on a declaration of war, or whatever it may be, uh, if you're not physically present, yet you cannot be physically present at a Bronson meeting or anybody else's meeting, so it remains an issue. Uh, the Attorney General may have reconsidered since, since two thousand and twenty, because it keeps coming up. So the only way to get an answer that, that we can live with as a matter of certainty is to request the Attorney General's opinion on our specific situation, or, or on the situation in general. I'm gonna read the opinion that I proposed requesting, the harder than anyway. Where is it? What is it?
You have anything?
I got it, I got it. Okay. It's a resolution you need to pass if you want me to request the opinion. The Attorney General's office requires that the board or body that's looking for the, for the opinion pass a resolution, it says. Now therefore being resolved that, the town attorney is authorized and directed to request an Attorney General opinion as to exactly what degree of physical impairment would be necessary to justify virtual appearance in lieu of physical appearance by a council member if in fact, physical impairment is required for such appearance when a quorum is physically present. And whether a council member lawfully appearing virtually is entitled to vote in the same manner and with like effect as would obtain were they physically rather than virtually present. That's the question you want them to answer. Again, arguably, and I wanna be fair in this, the two thousand and twenty opinion seems to say the answer is yes. You got a quorum, somebody who's disabled can appear virtually and they can vote and take part. But it doesn't say it clearly, it doesn't say it explicitly, it leaves room for people to argue. And if any action taken under those circumstances is, is subject to uncertainty and challenge, then it could be a real mess. It would be a comfort to have the Attorney General say, this, these are the rules, this is what you gotta follow. So, that, that's why I'm advocating passing this resolution, authorizing me to request the opinion, which I would do immediately, and we'll see where we are.
I move to pass resolution number twenty-four dash zero three. I second.
Okay, a version, I understand. Resolution number twenty-four oh three. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both of you?
The reason why I had asked the question on the virtual class was because they were speaking about, they were saying that a lot of the county representatives will get up and leave while they're supposed to vote. And they were saying that at a local level, that is, that's a no good. So that's why I asked that.
But there's a lot of questions being raised, and there is a degree of uncertainty about the whole area. And the more clear of an answer we can get, the better off we are, cause otherwise we're walking on eggshells with all of this.
And I'm sure you guys saw this, but I polled Levy County just to see what everybody was doing, and it's just, it's all over the place.
It's different.
Syracuse and Syracuse Water and Sewer District are allowing people to attend and vote virtually. Williston, you are not allowed to attend nor vote virtually, you have to be there in person. Chief One has never had the issue come up, so she, so she wouldn't know what she would do. Yankee Town has been handling it just like us, allowed to attend but not to vote. It is all over the board, so I mean, I don't know what to do.
We're gonna send a president, send by the first.
Well, we're gonna try.
And none of them have an actual authoritative basis for what they're saying. They've just decided this is what we wanna do, but really it's a creature of state law.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, motion carries. All right, sir, you can send your letter.
And I will do so tomorrow.
All right. Okay, committee reports. Curtis, you and I talked today and we're doing, everything, working out real good, the guys are doing good, the, uh... And I'd like to comment on our inmate crew work that Roddy is doing, that, that y'all, it looks like, I mean, every time, they, they staying busy, I know that. So, uh, and the work that y'all are doing, the equipment, everything is John O'Shaughnessy. There's all, Mr. Virginia.
Luke, straight quick, there's one. So, y'all got out there and cleaned Main Street up, I am so sorry, it looked so bad, but y'all got it looking so nice.
It's, they done threw trash back down again.
Yeah, but it looks way better than it did. Is there any kind of way that we could get some no dumping signs there?
On Main Street?
Uh, yes, around that tree, like if we could get one on the tree.
This is for Main Street of the county.
So that's a no.
They won't even plant it when I call them, so.
Remember about the stop, something with the stop sign issue there?
You talking about the one that's listed?
No, remember when we...
Have you seen that?
Went to put the four one, the four one stop sign.
Have you seen that picture? On the corner of, uh, Main Street and Miss Deesborough, have you seen that about this high? Have you seen it?
No.
It's knee-high to a little bit.
Yes, it is.
But, uh, y'all did a wonderful job, I'm gonna call the county and ask them if they do.
Yeah, look, yeah.
Take a picture and give it to you.
If they say it's not your street, then ask them why you couldn't have speed bumps.
I'm gonna ask them that too.
Because we wanted speed bumps on Main Street and they specifically said it's their road and we can't put them off.
I'm gonna call them tomorrow.
But I know they...
It's not, they won't play around.
Cause there, it's their road and they want it to be their road.
So if you call in Virginia, ask them who I'm speaking to and ask them, you have the authority to tell me that this is not your street?
And when they say no, say, okay, because we're gonna put speed bumps on it. And then directly call us and we're gonna order those speed bumps.
I feel good, wait.
Right, Mr. Roddy?
I feel good, wait.
That'll work.
Like you're getting that signed by somebody.
Sign, and then let me know when y'all doing it so I can take vacation.
Okay, Mr. Virginia, is that it?
Yes, thank you, thank you so much for cleaning that up.
Toddler.
Uh, I don't really have no one.
You sure?
No, I'm good, I just, how, how, we had any more, we're getting closer to spring break and the kids are gonna be free and loose.
Well, over the weekend, they tore up the water fountain at D R track. Um, they turned it over, broke the nozzle off, um, tore the front of it off, we put it back together, we chained it to the pole, so. And tell you, we put some nice toilets in, in the restroom, so they're probably not gonna last long.
Well, our cameras don't serve no good purpose at all.
Well, you can't put a camera inside the bathroom, so that's...
No, you can put it where, you can see who's going in there. We have one where we see who's going in there. Oh, yeah.
But they put it on a hoodie, you know.
Yeah. Our Michael Myers busted the toilet.
Yeah, they dropped, uh, fireballs.
Can we put a, um, a motion light up there that comes on so that when you enter?
Yeah, we have one up there.
It was that time?
Yeah, because we put, we, there is a motion light, right?
Sure.
So why is it still on?
Yeah, because if the motion light there, then when it takes the picture, it should be...
Well, that's, but you didn't say that the recent vandalism was at the bathroom, you said it was...
No, it was at the track, the, with the water fountain.
No, but that's what I'm saying, the last time at the bathroom, though, it was dark there, that's why I was asking, is there...
He just put those in after, when he recommended, yeah, like in the last couple of weeks, so.
Yeah, last, two weeks ago.
The bathroom may not have been open for that long, so.
No, it's not.
So if we realize they're open again, that would destroy it.
Well, you wanna tell them our idea?
I think about getting ordered some, uh, potty quarters, portable potties.
So you can lock those and then...
Locked, yeah, the ones they tear it up and then after hours that you use those.
You know, you know, you can buy them.
They're gonna push them back, they're gonna push them back.
Turn them over like a man.
No, we change the light bulb. We change them to the light bulb and so they have light.
So is the gate not being closed ever?
No, it never shut, they've never shut.
We can, we're always gonna do it. That's the whole point, close the park.
I would go and shut it.
Say that.
The portable potty.
I don't wanna hear that, I don't wanna hear that.
The portable potty was cheap, it was like eight hundred and something bucks to buy.
Eight hundred and something dollars, right? You could pay me seventeen sixty-five for an hour, I'm gonna go shut it and then walk.
Yeah, but you'd have to do that every day, we'd have to pay that every day. I'm lucky, somebody else would do it either. It's gonna hell up, that's the point, it's gonna hell up.
That's the point.
It will bite you, okay, it will bite you.
Right, yeah.
I promise.
I can drive around it.
That's how it is. Nobody does, because we don't have...
The gate coming on this road, right? You can't go in the grass and go around it?
You got a sign on one side and a fence on the other.
You can go around it. You can't go a car around it, like a car...
Yeah, you walk around, you walk around it. That's why we talked about closing and then adding the gate right there at the track for somebody who wanted to walk the track that could access the gate.
I say you should have got sundown, and anybody that wants to be up there after sundown, say, sorry, you guys can't take care of our parks and nobody wants to help, so therefore, forth, all that stuff, sundown, you done, I don't care. But that's just me.
That's what all parks have done, so we talked about the last...
That's exactly what they done.
We could, we could, we couldn't figure out who to, to shut. We get much more event, we need to borrow a honey wire and just sit down there. I say, I drive down, I, I drive through there every night.
We do, we do.
So then why can't you shut, why don't you shut the gate, see, you shut it?
I don't get it, it's midnight.
Too late.
Too late?
The vandalism before midnight, you go over there.
Why can't you get an automatic gate?
You can, but they ain't cheap.
I still see there is cameras. Because my children have got cameras that take pictures of deer and they're, I mean, and it's twelve, one o'clock at night, and you get a full-fledged...
Yeah.
Photo of that deer, and it looks like it's just like...
Well, now that we have the floodlights and we have the cameras, maybe...
But, but this is the thing, if someone's going out there to do something, they not gonna be just exposed.
They gonna put on a hoodie like they doing, they gonna put their head down, and, and they gonna walk them to whatever they wanna do, you can't see who it is.
Curtis, who in the world, I mean, who gets their job at this point?
Kids.
I don't even think it's kids, I honestly, that's, that was a full grown man that was on that picture, that was a full grown man, it's not kids. The one that, uh, yes, I'd give...
Yeah, you just don't, you don't know who, you know.
No, it's not homeless, it's somebody that has an issue with somebody, this is not like a homeless person.
I feel like the cameras are, is, is...
Ain't that homeless person to go out there at night and shut the thing, seventeen sixty-five an hour?
You're killing me. We talked about if the fire...
Say we're fixing to work.
We're gonna have one of you guys go do it.
We hose them down for it, huh? I called the cops the other night. Did you come out? Huh? Did you come out? Yeah, you were, uh, I said you've been there doing that before.
All right, Michelle, you had anything else?
No, that's more than enough.
Franklin, can you hear me?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, you got anything from your, your committee?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm not reading any of them. Oh, I did, wanted to say, uh, because the senator here is gonna be, uh, with...
You can't, you can't, you can't, you can't, yes, certainly.
And with the, in the perfect way, the hospital that we can take on this whole act to do that, or the, the leaders that, you know, that you can trust the senator.
I did, I want back open to the senator?
Uh, they, uh...
You talking about the map?
You talking about the map? She talking about the map?
Maps, huh?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Some kind of light, you want some, some kind of light, a solar light?
I keep saying it's a solar light.
Oh, is it the four wheel, the, the four mirrors with the traps? Oh, it's on both sides of the, like, when you go into the cemetery, there was lights on.
Pillars.
On the pillars. He said, can we use some solar lights to put it on there so they come on or not, cause I guess it's not lit up.
No, it's not.
We put one on the light pole, only our flag pole, so, but.
That, that's all the way in there?
Yeah, that's all the way in. So where you doing so there?
Just on the, on the pillars, like a little solar light on each one of them, so it, it comes on, it does, it goes off.
Right.
This is probably something to get from the hearts. Okay.
And, uh, and I get, I get, I, what he was saying about if you, uh, present in the meeting, and, what are you, uh, uh, I, I need, uh, tell you, uh, or the lawyer, if you just not here.
He. No. No, but he's gonna check with the state to get us a confirmation on it, because what we found so far is like two different things, and neither one of them is really clear, so we've already got a letter drawn out to go to the state to get an opinion.
Cause he's not voting.
Cause he, he's not voting, he's not in a, it's not a vote.
If we're getting information, if, if we're getting information from him and not a vote.
It's just an opinion, whatever he says, we don't have to go with that, so it's not a vote, it doesn't sway some, it just gives us, I guess, feedback on how we may have to make our vote, so he doesn't have to say so.
He's here to guide us on us doing the business of the town.
So he can give us advice, whether it's on the phone, or whether it's on the computer, or whether he's here in person, that doesn't make us vote that way.
All right, you got anything else?
I didn't hear what he was saying.
I can't hear what he's saying.
Well, what he, what he's saying, uh, during the time when Mr. One was absent, sick or whatever, he was on duty. Okay. Uh, he's a paid person here too.
He's not an elected official that.
I, I know that, but what he's saying is, he, he's like, oh, he.
It doesn't make no difference, he's just here for advice. That's all we got, just for legal advice is all he's got.
He doesn't make the.
He does not make the shit out.
These five people right here. What he just said, what he just, what he just said, so when it comes up, we'll have to vote, you're gonna have to vote, whether Frank or you or anybody else that's absent, you, you're over. Whether that's gonna be an ordinance or not. Well, what I'm saying is, suppose, look here, uh, councilman, let me say something, councilman Shew is not here. He, he, they don't, he, they're not there. But you all gonna have to come back and vote, whether that's gonna be what you gonna do.
No, sir.
Oh, no?
No, we just, we just passed the ordinance for.
What we are talking about doing here is what is legal to do. It don't have nothing to do with what our opinions are.
Well, it's been legal.
If it's, if it's illegal for us to do anything on here, then we got changed, we got, you know, we got followed legally.
Well, there, that means you got to vote, right?
No.
That's why he's checking with the attorney general.
So he's gonna find out what the state says we have to do, so if the state says it's okay, then it's okay. If the state say you can't, you can't. We don't have to vote on that, because we have to follow what they say. And that's what he's gonna see, is what they say definitely, because the way it's written is not clear. That's why every single city in this county does something different. So we wanna know legally and by me, so nobody can take us to court, or whatever, this what they said, this what the attorney general say, we have to do, so that's what our policy is gonna be.
And then if you do something, and then if you do something that is away from that or different than that, then you're subject to somebody filing charges.
We're trying to get it the right way.
That's all we're doing, that's all we're doing, sir.
So right now, we don't have a, we, we don't know.
We don't know, that's exactly right. All right, anything else?
Definitely.
I have a question. The, the pool is stopped, uh, by the jail. On, is she in the, in the cemetery? Who's responsible for the flash?
Are they allowed?
Well, during, so during the day, everything is working, the one that goes when you come from, like, Newberry, that one at night, like, right now it's not working.
You gotta call them.
Well, those don't just naturally flash, those flash when a car is coming. No, they, not your flashlight or shoulder light.
I'm gonna, I'm already calling tomorrow about the Main Street, so I'll, I'll call Mr. Casey, that's who is over those street signs, is Mr. Casey. I'll ask him tomorrow. But I mean, he hates those stop signs, because when the, when the batteries or whatever it is goes out.
You don't get a lot of sunshine.
That's what it is.
You don't get a lot of sunshine then.
It's, it's the one, uh, that's basically towards on the.
The jail?
The jail side.
Okay.
Um, at night, that's it. The battery must be dead, meaning it must not be, uh, absorbing and retaining the charge from during the day.
That's why he hates putting them on. They're liable for something happening.
Well.
Do I need any other public participation?
Well, no.
You sure?
Yeah. No, let's, let's go on.
All right, we have, uh, had a chance to look at the bills.
I think we're gonna pay the bills.
Probably move to signature with pay the bills, all in favor, signify by the same eye.
Aye.
Motion carries.